Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this April 26, 2021 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using still in response to Governor Brown's Stay Home Save Lives Order. This format enables the City Council to meet and take care of business while keeping everyone safe. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. Looking ahead, tonight's regular meeting will include a public forum and one public hearing. Information about how to participate is available on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And as always, other avenues of communication with me and city councillors are available, including email and voicemail. So thank you all for joining us, and with that, I am going to turn it over to the City Manager to introduce the first topic.
Thank you, Mayor. I always thought it would be fun to be a flight attendant so you could do that whole routine at a party, but now you can do the mayor's COVID routine. You probably have that memorized. We're joined today by a really stellar group of people that have been working really hard on this issue for you since the last time we met, and I believe that Matt Rodriguez, our Public Works Director, is going to kick it off.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Matt Rodriguez. I'm the Acting Public Works Director. As you know, council had held a work session on April 12 to discuss the current homelessness crisis in Eugene. At the work sessions, council passed a motion to move our proposed ordinance to public hearing that would allow for the temporary establishment of safe parking and safe tent sites. That public hearing will be held later tonight. In addition, council passed a motion for the City Manager to return with a proposed plan to address vehicle camping through parking restrictions in commercial and industrial areas. Since then, staff have worked together across departments to create a proposed plan that we will be sharing with you tonight. The proposed plan is part of an overall strategy to identify needs and next steps for addressing the growing number of unhoused community members and its community-wide impacts. So our presenters will be Chris Henry, our Traffic Engineer, and Jeff Petrie, our Director of Administration and Planning and Development. And with that, I'm going to pass this to them.
Thanks, Matt. Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Petrie. I'm the Acting Director of Administration and Planning and Development Department, which includes the Parking Services Programme. At the April 12th work session, you asked staff to return in two weeks with a plan to address vehicle camping in the commercial industrial areas of the city. That plan would include no parking on one side of the street or no parking on both sides of the street if necessary for 90-degree truck turning radius, as well as limited-duration parking in the remaining areas. As Matt mentioned, the parking plan is part of an overarching strategy that includes an ordinance change to allow for larger, safe vehicle parking sites, and you will hold a public hearing later tonight with possible action on this ordinance proposal. Staff's proposed plan contains on-street recommendations for signed parking restrictions and recommended code changes to support unregulated on-street parking areas in the commercial industrial areas and across the city. The recommended plan will maintain vehicle access so businesses can make and receive deliveries in the commercial industrial areas, create on-street parking turnover to allow for customers to find parking, and help businesses stay successful so they can employ people in Eugene. As you will soon see, the plan is focused in West Eugene, which is a major employment area in the city. Chris Henry, the City of Eugene's Traffic Engineer, will discuss the first part of the plan that involves signage in the right-of-way.
Thank you, Jeff. Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Chris Henry, the City's Traffic Engineer. Staff looked at areas within Eugene that are zoned commercial and industrial. This is shown in lavender on the map. We next added the streets and alleys in those areas, which are shown in teal-blue. This gave us a starting point for our analysis. South Eugene is clipped off because there are almost no commercial-industrial zone areas there. We refined the map shown here to remove streets and alleys with no parking in the regulated downtown and campus parking districts. We took out downtown and campus because we don't feel the intent is to change those actively managed areas, and only a subset of those streets have issues with vehicles turning and commercial parking. We will focus on the subset of streets shown in teal-blue. Again, South Eugene is clipped off because there are almost no commercial-industrial zone areas there. We were to look at just this subset of streets that have on-street parking and implement the motion as stated, then the estimated cost to install signs in this scenario is approximately $115,000, $115,000 in materials and labor, and would take at least two months to install. To arrive at this high-level cost estimate, we measured over 17 miles of curb frontage, where signs may be spaced every 150 feet at an estimated cost of approximately $175 per sign. Costs include staff time to identify sign locations, order and purchase an inventory of the signs, call for utility locates, write work orders, and install the signs. Not captured in this is the staff time to write administrative orders for the signs. Based on our observation of how streets are used in the teal-blue areas and to significantly reduce costs, staff would propose a more focused plan that would address areas with known camping and parking complaints and work with abutting businesses to determine on-street parking needs. Again, staff are proposing a more focused plan that would address areas with known camping and parking complaints and work with abutting businesses to determine on-street parking needs. The orange highlighted areas on the map are staff's initial recommendation to focus on sign parking regulations. There are curb segments that need no parking signs to accommodate 90-degree turning radius at intersections and within the block near driveways. Some of the areas would benefit from commercial-only parking signs 24/7. We're also proposing to not initially regulate every road within the commercial-industrial areas because many businesses rely on the street parking for customer and employee parking, such as the streets on the right side of the map near, well, closer to downtown. Another factor in our recommendation is timing and cost. Traffic operations work is seasonal, with signs installed in the wet months and pavement markings and stripes installed in the dry months. Our sign season has passed, and implementing this plan affects our allocation of resources and will require us to reprioritize our workflow. A possible consequence is that we may not be able to complete our pavement markings as planned this year. With this focus plan, we will be able to divert our existing resources to known problem areas while preserving public parking for businesses that need it at a rough cost of less than $50,000. Jeff will talk about potential code changes that will support business activity in the unregulated parking areas.
Thanks, Chris. So Chris has presented a plan that would support West Eugene businesses, employees, and customers through focused on-street parking regulations. I will discuss proposed code changes that still allow sleeping in vehicles and parking the right-of-way, creates better access for all vehicles in the right-of-way, and efficiently utilizes parking staff resources. The need for the code changes is critical in the commercial and industrial areas today, but also to apply to parking issues across the city. I have managed the parking program for the last 15 years, and I've experienced complaints from across the city about frustrations with vehicles meeting code by driving around the block and reparking in the same spot, or moving across the street, or the lack of access to the limited number of commercial parking spaces in the city. The recommended code changes work in tandem with proposed increased signage in the commercial-industrial areas, proposed ordinance to allow larger, safe vehicle parking spaces, and other unhoused efforts to address ongoing challenges and provide greater access to all for on-street parking. There are five recommended code changes to consider in conjunction with our overall strategy. We are presenting the recommendations tonight for consideration. Code changes require a scheduling public hearing with council taking action. Any changes would take effect 30 days later. This is a first pass at the recommendations, and I'll walk through each one. There are two recommended changes to the definition section of Chapter 5 Traffic Code, which is what parking enforcement enforces. The first is defining the block as both sides of the street between the two nearest cross streets. This change is recommended for storage on the street or parking time limit complaints. The current code allows a vehicle to simply move across the street, and the definition change would require a vehicle to leave the block. The definition change of a block in the code would also match the information on parking citations that is adjudicated by municipal court, which is a street name with two nearest cross streets with no mention of the side of the street. The second recommended definition change to Chapter 5 Traffic Code is how a commercial vehicle is defined. The recommended code change here would remove the option of a 12-inch by 12-inch printed sign and require the vehicle to display a commercial name that is clearly visible from 100 feet and has the vehicle registration to, has a vehicle registered to a corporate entity. With the prevalence of color printers over the last many years, it's very easy to simply print out any company logo on 12-inch by 12-inch paper, place it on one's dashboard, and use in any commercial space in a city of Eugene. As such, this results in a city's limited commercial parking spaces not being readily available to our commercial vehicle drivers. Storage on the street is a complaint-driven violation. Prior to COVID, we had one parking officer that would enforce all parking complaints across the city and outside, which is outside of downtown campus areas. The officer would spend about half their time enforcing vehicle storage complaints. Many times, a vehicle will move forward on the block or re-park on the other side of the street. Parking would mark the complaint close if it was found on the same block move forward or across the street. Then a new complaint would need to be received to start the process all over again. For staff, it is a challenge to determine if a vehicle moved or not with the, or not with the current definition of a block to chase vehicle complaints over and over. The proposed change would require the vehicles to move at least two blocks away and stay removed from the original parking space for at least 72 hours unless it has an on-street parking permit. This code change mirrors a similar model used in the city of Bend and creates vehicle turnover in the right-of-way. It still allows the vehicles to park on the street. They just must park in a different location. This proposed code change is also complaint-driven and would add recreation vehicles to the list of prohibited parking between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. Recreation vehicles, similar to motor buses and trucks, have generators going or the vehicle running, and that may not be compatible with overnight sleeping areas. And finally, the fifth recommended code change is to require a vehicle to move at least two blocks away to reset the parking time limits. Under the current code, a vehicle may meet the code by moving to the other side of the street or driving around the block and reparking in the same spot. This code change would result in vehicle turnover in the right-of-way. So summary of our supposed, summary of the proposed parking plan. Staff recommends a plan that initially focuses on parking signage in the West Eugene commercial-industrial areas based on current needs and a plan that is responsive to conditions and needs in other commercial-industrial areas. The plan also proposes changes of Chapter 5 to support unregulated parking areas in West Eugene commercial-industrial areas and across the city. This recommended parking plan is one component of an overarching strategy to provide support to our community. This concludes our presentation, and we're here to answer questions.
Before we go there, Jeff, can you go back to the, thank you. We want to emphasize that this is a starting point, that the orange highlighted areas are the places that we know about, but where there are complaints. But there are certainly other places that may warrant treatment, and we'll have an opportunity to address those concerns as they come forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for that presentation and for the map and the, and the decisions around focusing is, I think, very helpful for all of us in our, in our discussion. And I have Mike first and then Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work, and this is a dramatic problem in our community that needs an immediate solution. And so I'm willing to support this plan. It's well-conceived. I'm willing to support the effort and the expenditure. The only, I have two, I don't think they're questions or concerns, I suppose. One, because Chris isn't here anymore, I get to say, it said, I, my experience tells me this is going to be whack-a-mole, and as soon as we deal effectively with the problem in this area, it's going to move somewhere else. So my first questions are, have you scouted the area for other similarly situated industrial sites or streets and that you think people will move to at all? I mean, do you have a sense of what happens next, Chris, or anyone else, Jeff?
Well, we did identify, thank you, councillor, we did identify streets in the commercial-industrial area that do not have any parking regulations. Some areas do already, and we certainly expect things to move around, and we can respond. We've had to already. We'll continue to do that. But this, this focus should address most of those problems.
And that's awesome. What, when you say we will respond, what, how will that, what would that look like? What will we do? Will we respond similarly and put up signs and do the exact same thing?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say the exact same thing, but in the spirit of what we've shared with you, managing the parking with commercially-marked vehicles only 24/7, no parking whatsoever, and in certain areas where maneuverability is important, those are, and the code, potential code changes, if you adopt them, are the tools that we would be able to apply.
Excellent. The, so I'm concerned that we'll move the problem, but I'm, again, willing to move forward with this because it takes some action, and we desperately need to do something. My only strong concern is our lack of enforcement capacity. We can make all the rules we want, but if we can't enforce them, then I, I have questions about what we do there. Jeff, you mentioned that you have one full-time enforcement for this, who I assume is writing tickets. Can you tell me about two things? One, do we have any kind of capacity or ability to increase enforcement or focus? And then number two, do we have any increased capacity for towing of vehicles rather than simply siding?
Yeah, thanks, councillor Clark. The, we have more than, we have two to four parking officers that rotate through this area currently. They, with kind of the lower demand in the downtown and campus area, we've moved the officers out into the community to do various roles. So we do have more than one today that can do this work. Towing is always a last resort for us. We try to seek compliance, and we're hoping with the ordinance changes to a lot, or proposed ordinance changes for larger camp sites that we provide an outlet for people to go to. But it is, it's part of the enforcement process. So there are, that is part of the, the process of vehicles as we do have the ability to tow.
I hope we don't have to do that as well, but you and I both know that that's going to be a part of effectively dealing with this, is that at some point, there are people who will say, no, or I can't. So will the police need to be involved at a point of towing a vehicle that won't or cannot move?
I, is the chief on here? Yes, there is a part, there is a, there's many segments that contribute to that piece. So law enforcement would be the last resort. We have outreach teams. We partner with Land County Health. We have a bunch of avenues that we pursue prior to that. But law enforcement has been present for activity that happens around towing in this area last year.
And I suppose, since the chief isn't here, this is a question for the manager. Will that, will the department's resources or capacities create any issue with making sure that this is enforced and dealt with effectively?
So I was gonna, thanks, I was gonna just remind everybody that we are in this unified command, incident command structure right now, so we have a much more coordinated team approach. And I think as we go through all of these changes, the sign changes, the purchasing potentially of land and setting up safe sleeping sites, I know these things are kind of coming together. All of those are going to have potentially additional resource needs that we'll need to bring as part of potentially a supplemental budget as we move forward. But I think right now, I have not heard that there's a resource concern, at least yet, with, with kind of ramping this up initially, but we'll find out pretty quickly.
Do you anticipate coming back to us if there is?
Yes.
So we won't have to hear, we don't have the money for that, so we can't do that at this time. It'll be, you'll come to us and say, hey, we're, we are following through with this, and we want this dealt with quickly. So here's the need.
Yeah, we, I mean, I would expect that Matt and Christie would say, hey, we've got a resource need. We talked about it actually earlier today around what are we kind of gearing up for in terms of potential safe sites in this work? So yes, you'll hear from us.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, I have Randy, then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I want to thank staff for working on this. I know that this is a difficult issue. I appreciate the work, but as, as you know, I personally don't think it goes far enough, but I'm certainly willing to, at least this councillor is willing to give it a shot and see what happens as long as we get regular updates on whether the problem is getting worse or not. The other thing I just want to say is, to me, this is part of a simultaneous approach. We'll be doing this at the same time we are hopefully finding sites and relocating people to. This, but at the same time, we need this tool on the other end for those people who do not voluntarily leave the area. These are causing real problems for real people, people trying to work, trying to keep food on the table, trying to maintain their housing. It's hard for these businesses, and right now, it's important that we show good faith to this community because quite frankly, we need their help in solving the larger problem that we're also working on. So this is about partnerships. This is about credibility. This is about dealing with real issues that real people are experiencing. So I just, I just wanted to say that. In fact, it's a, it's really kind of a chicken and egg discussion, except we need both at the same time. So I just want to emphasize that piece, and I do appreciate the establishment of the establishment of an IC system. I think that is a great way to manage this. Uh, I believe it's a crisis that warrants that type of management. Could you please put up that map, uh, again, that was up earlier? I want to ask a question specifically about, um, West Seventh Avenue.
Yes, give me just one moment to get there.
You're good. My clock stopped. And I know which one West Seventh is. Is there a way you could point that out somehow for, uh, my colleagues in the public that's watching?
Is that possible?
You got right there. Just up, up a little bit. Right to you. Yeah, there you go. That's, that's the street I'm talking about. Okay, count the cross streets there. I'm seeing four. So how does that work with the seventy-two hour rule and moving, uh, a vehicle farther than two blocks? Because you could, you could count one, two, three, four blocks in there. So theoretically, somebody could just keep moving on the same block and never leave.
They would, uh, by the proposed definition, they would have to leave the block. It would have to be two blocks away and it's based on the cross streets.
Yes.
If you started, if you started here, you have, uh, if you're in this area, there's one and there's two. So you'd have to come with, you'd have to be outside. There's one and there's two. So you can't go that far.
But start at, start at just, uh, west of Bertelson. One, two, three. You're at the, you're at the dead end on the other side, right there. Because people park there and they also park on the extreme end to the west. What I want to do is not create a loophole. All of a sudden we have another issue we can't address for, uh, our people that are working in there. You see what I'm saying?
I don't know if I got frozen or everybody else did, but I, I understand what you're pointing out, so I'd.
That's the only street I'm seeing in the area that that applies to, but that's also one of our worst areas. So I, I just, I just want to, to mention that. And then, uh, another thing, uh, I wanted to, to say, if somebody could respond to that, appreciate, Sarah, are you acknowledging that? I, I would just like to hear if there's a way to work that. So they have to leave that area. And then the last thing I want to say, I, I recognize that a hundred and fifteen thousand for signage feels like a lot of money. At the same time, my understanding is that's a worst-case scenario, but I also want to point out the dollar losses to businesses and workers in this area, I believe far exceeds the hundred and fifteen thousand dollar level. But, uh, again, I'm, I'm personally willing to, to give this a chance as long as we have regular reports back and we'll see what happens. But I, I, we need to be prepared to shift our, our strategy and our tactics if this is not working.
Fine. Randy, I'll give you a second round if you need one later.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so.
Could, could somebody respond to my question though?
Counselor Rhodes?
Yeah.
Yep, uh, so there's some other, you know, the seventy-two hour, uh, in that screen we recommended in the yellow zone, yellow areas where we put parking, uh, signs on the street. Uh, if the initial, you know, efforts does not generate what we need, then we add commercial vehicle signs or other types of options there. So uh, it's not the, it's not a one and done. It is an option to continue if there, if it, if the street need, needs, needs that treatment.
Thank you very much. I, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, Alan and then Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the maps. It's helped quite a bit and the thought put behind it. This does Mac a lot like we're fixing one problem area and people are just going to move to another area because we're not solving the problem. Simultaneously trying to solve the problem, but we're not going to get there. So this is clearly going to be, I think, a whack-a-mole problem. We are going to move people from these RVs from one place and putting them in another place. Uh, and, and the people who are suffering through this right now, um, I don't think they care much about where they end up, as long as they're not there someplace else, but we as councilors need to think about that. Um, in, in the ordinance, um, on the second page, section three, five point two-two-five, prohibited stopping, standing and parking subsection three E. So we added RVs there to that subsection, but it says on either side of the street in front of or adjacent to a residence motel, da-da-da-da. So there are places in the city, mostly on the periphery, that don't necessarily have one of those things right in front. They're open space or they're woods or things like that. Those tend to be on the periphery. And so my fear is, is that, uh, what we're doing is we're pushing those people out to those spots and that's going to be the whack-a-mole problem. So, uh, the streets with open spaces or woods with no residences or, or these other kinds of businesses, uh, uh, and we're going to have the RVs go out there. Laurel Valley is a good example of where a lot of these things happen in, in my part of town and Bailey Hill and that part of town too. Um, so how do we fix that problem before it becomes a problem? Cause I think what we're, we're moving really fast on this, but I, and it, and it sure Max like whack-a-mole to me. Um, so I'm wondering how we, if we can fix these simultaneous problems. And then second question is about the timeline for this. So we're doing this really fast. We're going to do this motion, uh, if it passes, then I assume this is kind of like the, the plan will get implemented as a pilot and then we'll, we'll do the ordinance, which will go to public hearing and then do that normal processes. And so does that ordinance go into effect or do we vote on that after we get the plan report back about how we're doing? Two questions.
I think there were several questions in there. Uh, I'll start with the ones that I can answer. Uh, the Laurel Hill and Bailey Hill roads are, uh, in my mind, I'm viewing them as residential areas. And we do have a residential parking permit program that we could put in place if the residents want, uh, to create on-street parking regulations and that could address, uh, some of the concerns you raised. Uh, in terms of the proposed plan, uh, the, uh, one of the possible motions is that, uh, it's in the AIS uh, is to support the strategies presented today and then direct the city manager report back to council in three months. Uh, and then also to schedule a public hearing. So I think the, uh, uh, we are proposing to, we can move forward with what we presented tonight within our existing resources. Uh, to have it, I don't, I want to characterize as a pilot. It is changing the on-street parking regulations. And maybe I can ask Catherine to talk about the code piece.
So those are all, those are administrative regulations and not code ordinance? Right?
Correct.
The ordinance part, that'll take more time.
Correct. The plan that was presented, um, the strategies and stuff could be done through the, the administrative mechanism and then separately the proposed code amendments, what is, uh, available for you today is to just move that forward to a public hearing.
So nobody answered my question about how do we avoid the whack-a-mole problem? So I think we're just pushing it off to other places.
Yes, I think that it's true that we are going to be moving people and that's why we are also having a public hearing on creating safe spaces. Cause like, the reality is there's people that don't have enough other places to go.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Greg and then Emily.
So I'm interested in, uh, what happens down the line. Say we're successful with this particular pilot. Is this something that we want to continue? Or do we want to morph over into, uh, the safe spaces or the areas that we've identified as, uh, being, uh, you know, for the homeless? I know that, I know that, that Ed Russo is working on it now, but if we have some of those, those things in place, uh, what do you see in terms of, um, you know, moving some of those vehicles or moving some, a lot of those people over to, uh, more to better combinations?
Counselor Evans, this is, uh, Christie Hamon. I apologize, my video will not turn on for some reason. So I think that one of the key things is with the next public hearing that you'll have this evening with the additional spaces. It would provide, it prioritizes, um, a couple of different areas and especially that West Eugene area to provide places for people to go. And so the next work session, that's planned to come back and talk about the progress on that component of the work that's happening is in a few weeks. I believe it's May nineteenth. And we'll be able to give you a better sense of when it looks like we're going to be closer to bringing something online. So I don't know if that helps answer your question or not.
Uh, to some degree. Uh, can you tell us where we are in terms of inventory for, you know, uh, rest stops or, uh, places for people to go to? Where, what, where, where, where do we have them and, and how many do we have?
You know, I, I wish I could recite all of those off the top of my head. I know that we added a hundred and twenty additional extra spaces um, during the COVID that you guys, um, with the five rest stops that you brought on. We had a hundred prior to that. I'd be happy to get you a map with the locations of all that work and the number of people that are, um, in those, um, rest stops and microsites if that would be helpful.
Does that include any of the city-owned parks?
The city-owned park, if you're referring to Washington Jefferson, or you?
Uh, I got, I, I'm, I'm referring to like Peterson Barred, for example.
Yes.
We had, we had, you know, we had, we had six, uh, tents and, uh, uh, six vehicles over there during the COVID crisis. So I.
Yeah, those were, those were sanctioned programs, yes.
But we would be using them.
The ones that are established now that are the permanent microsites, not the emergency ones. So we're not re-establishing, for example, the one at Amazon Center.
No, that's not part of the plan as it sits right now, Counselor Evans. Um, so we do have some, there, there's likely to be some capacity within that existing system of microsites and rest stops that we have already created. There is just some, obviously some turnover, which is good because hopefully people are moving on to more permanent solutions. But what we're talking about right now, uh, concerning the ordinance that will go to a public hearing later tonight is establishing the potential to establish larger sites, larger sites for tent camping, larger sites for vehicle camping. And right now, our unified command team is working with the county and also in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to look all across Eugene and try and find places that kind of meet criteria for, for good locations to cite those type of safe spaces. So that's the work that we have in the process.
Good.
Okay, uh, Emily and then Claire.
Thank you. Thank you for doing all this work. I know we asked you to do it very quickly. Um, and it is a desperate situation. Uh, the businesses continue to write us as they showed with what's going on and, and we have to do something. So my concerns are, are also with three E. Um, and that we have nowhere to tell people to go. And, um, if we find a place, when we find a place, then how long will it take us to get it set up so that people can actually start staying there? I think that's a really important time period of what are we going to do? Um, and they're going to have to go somewhere. Does this, uh, this covers the whole city that RVs can't park in front of residents?
If it was adopted into code, it would be applicable to the entire city. And we enforce this section of the code on a complaint basis.
Well, this, this seems like it could spill over into some other problems. Um, you know, sometimes people have someone come visit and they want them to stay in front of their house and then maybe the neighbor is mad and doesn't want them to be there. But also, um, people that, that you don't know, may, maybe you're okay with it, but maybe the neighbors aren't. Um, so I'm concerned, you know, I know we have to be fair, but I'm really concerned if, uh, this is over the whole city, what the reaction will be in other parts. Will people become less tolerant? And, and yet we have nowhere to send people. So, um, I don't know if you can address that or not, but it's, it's a really big concern to me about that three E.
It's come up, I mean, it comes up right over, I think, the last ten or fifteen years I've been in this job. Um, usually by the time that you go through the process of the, uh, the, the storage on the street, uh, there's two pieces. One's the storage on the street and one's the, uh, uh, the, um, no stopping, standing or parking. Um, there's a process that we go through and we always educate the, uh, vehicle, RVs first and try to get a sense of what, what's going on. But usually we do get compliance. Our parking officers are really good about, uh, seeking compliance and, uh, if there are issues with RVs, uh, parked out front, sometimes they move onto the problem into a driveway or other areas. So um, that is, it is enforced across the city and that is, you know, a potential consequence that it does impact other areas.
All right, uh, Claire and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I appreciate the thought that's gone into this. Um, it, it is really challenging, uh, you know, conflicts between our unhoused residents and businesses and other residents is definitely one of the most challenging things I deal with as a city councillor and I suspect that's true for a, a lot of my fellow councillors. Um, but first I want to answer Greg's question about where we have rest stops and parks. West Morland, Alton Baker, Skinner Butte Park are three parks that we currently have new rest stops in. So, um, so some questions and some commentary. Um, so we, so I've mentioned before, I, I, I do not have a driveway. I have to rely on street parking. My neighbors could call in a complaint against me and make me move my car two blocks away for seventy-two hours under these proposals. They probably won't, um, but they could, particularly with COVID when I barely drive my car anymore. Um, so is there, uh, a street parking permit for places that don't have formal parking permit programs?
We do not. So it needs, usually the street permits are tied to regulated parking programs. We, we have a, we have one, but it's for construction vehicles, not for, I think, what you're describing here.
Yeah, so that's my, that's my life, um, and the life of many of my neighbors. We don't, we don't have any place to park but on the street. Um, and you know, there'll definitely be unintended consequences of this plan. And I thought Mike was going to quote Counselor Pryor's other mantra. Do you want it fast, cheap or right? Pick two. Um, you know, so I, if we pass this, uh, we should just expect there's going to be, um, unintended consequences. So the code changes would apply throughout the city, not just in the commercial industrial areas. Is that right?
Correct.
And then I was a little confused that, Jeff, you said this wasn't a pilot, but you're proposing only to do some streets in terms of signage, not all of them. So what would trigger the continuation, uh, or doing the rest of the signage?
Yeah, I, I guess I view the signs are going in the ground and they, they're going, it'd be, uh, uh, the posts and the signs are going in the ground for reasons around commercial activity. Uh, the curb side does change over time and so there could be a point where those signs are not needed and they come out or there's a time when they get expanded. And so for us, the initial phase here is based on, you know, parking demand and challenges and we would, uh, kind of adjust it over time. So we've had areas of the city where signs go up, signs come down, meters go in, meters go out. It does change over time. So it, it's a pilot, yes, uh, but we, we typically, uh, we have signs already up in the West Eugene area and they've been up there for a long time.
All right, well, I'm, that's leaving me more confused. Um.
Counselor, sorry, can I add a little bit to that? So I, I would also say as you get further east, it becomes a little more complicated when you're thinking about changes to parking. It's more dynamic. There's more uses that happen on those streets. And many of the West Eugene streets that we're highlighting initially focused on rashes, limited parking demand, uh, on-street parking demand for people accessing the adjacent businesses. When you start getting east even off West Eleventh on Conger and Wilson, you start seeing people using streets in a different way. So I think you, we would just need to have a little bit more of a nuanced approach on those streets to understand what the right amount of regulation is if they needed that. on those streets to understand what the right amount of regulation is if they needed that.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. I can see us getting complaints from other businesses and other commercial industrial areas that want to see the same thing on their streets. Um, lastly, I just have to point out, unless something's changed, we don't do parking enforcement after five o'clock. So having an ordinance that says you can't park somewhere between eight PM and six AM is actually frankly useless because nobody's gonna come and enforce on that complaint. So sorry to be harsh, uh, but this is, uh, an issue I've had for a long time. Uh, again, people come and park on my street illegally after six, they know they're never gonna get a parking ticket. Um, I can't call and complain, nobody's gonna come and force. So I think we need to consider changing, uh, a shift time for our parking enforcement so that we can actually enforce after five o'clock. Thank you.
May, may I add a few, uh, you're absolutely correct, Councilor Siret. We cannot, we don't have a second shift or a third shift, uh, for parking enforcement. Uh, the code change is, uh, we do have the ability to cite for vehicles that are parking between ten PM and six AM. And what we do is we come out the day before, you know, we mark the tires, uh, do our license plate recognition, uh, legal education flyer with the vehicle. And if we come out the next twenty-four hours later, the next day, and it's still parked there in the morning, then we can issue a citation, which is different than actively enforcing at ten o'clock at night.
Okay, uh, Jennifer and then Matt.
Thank you, thanks to staff. And also I want to thank Counselor Gross for really pushing this and getting everything organized and getting it all to us. I appreciate that. Um, actually, the last thing that Claire brought up was my question, was what do we do since we don't have enforcement at night? But it sounds like you're aware of that and, and you do have one thing that you do to help, uh, to help with that. Um, it does make me a little concerned to do something citywide, um, when I, when I initially thought we were focusing just on commercial and industrial zone areas, which I think is a hundred percent, uh, makes sense. But, um, these recommendations, along with our other conversation about expanding our safe parking, seem appropriate to me considering the, the issues that these folks are dealing with. Um, I do agree that there may be unintended consequences and I like the idea of checking in um, and just keeping an eye on this and making sure we don't need to do less or more, or just not so much of the cookie cutter if necessary. Um, so overall, I, I am very supportive of this, coupled with the other stuff that we are doing, so that is it.
Okay, and Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and, and thank you, staff. And, 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 and thank you, Counselor Gross. Uh, you, you and I, uh, actually agree on more than we disagree on, but this is a moment where there, there's, there's some daylight between, between us. Um, I don't deny that there are extreme problems, legal issues, unsanitary conditions that are related to what is being dubbed as, as, as car camping. Uh, but camping may be, uh, a bit of a misnomer. Uh, it may not be the most appropriate term as camping implies, at least to me, leisurely activity. As if the unhoused population living day to day in their vehicle choose to exist in their car or RV, uh, when by and large a lack of affordable housing, extreme low wages and disinvestment uh, in mental health services has led us here. So other than a, a moral argument, and I contend, by the way, that moving persons from point A without a point B yet for them to go to, uh, is at the core of, 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 of this, uh, particular issue, why I'm having so much heartburn about it. But I have legal concerns as well. So I have a question for legal counsel. Um, and it is in regard to, uh, equal protection under the law, in particular, section twenty of the state constitution. Uh, equality and privileges and immunities of citizens reads, "No law shall be passed granting to any citizen or class of citizens privileges or immunities which upon the same terms shall not be, shall not equally belong to all citizens." My question is, on the heels of action that council just took to include the unhoused community, the unhoused residents of Eugene, um, protection, uh, uh, or, or, uh, in regards to a, 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 a biased crime, does this proposed code ordinance change in any way, shape or form violate section twenty, equality of privileges and immunities of citizens?
No. Um, for a couple of reasons. The, if you're talking about the, the proposed ordinance that, um, has the changes to chapter five, those are entirely facially neutral. They apply across the board to the entire city, to everybody parking regardless of any classification that person may fall into, including, um, whether or not they're unhoused. That, for purposes of the action that was taken last week, that did not create a, um, that, what that did specifically was include unhoused status as a basis for which a biased crime can be charged. So that wouldn't have any impact on an equal protection type analysis. That said, I would still be reviewing, um, any ordinance that comes before you for any equal protection concerns I may have. And the, the proposed code amendments in front of you are in no way facially invalid. And we would make sure however that enforcement is done, is done consistently with all, um, state law, constitutional law, case law, as we do with all of our enforcements.
Okay, so, Sonari, thank you. So there's a, a, a resident who lives a block away, who lives in an RV in front of, uh, a friend of a relative's, uh, house. They're part of our community, someone new moves in and is biased toward them because they're essentially unhoused and, and, and living in their vehicle. And they call and, and make this complaint because it's a complaint-driven process. Is that individual protected in any way, shape or form? Or would the same, with the same, um, with the same penalties, uh, applied to them right here in South Eugene that they would have to move their vehicle multiple blocks even though they reside in front of a friend or family member's house?
I'm not, I don't know if I'm a hundred percent clear what you're asking. Are you talking about because of their, um, the person that's, that's registering the complaint may have a bias against the unhoused? Whether that makes a difference in whether or not our chapter five, um, can be enforced? I just want to make sure I'm answering.
Yeah, I think you can make a strong argument. If someone's complaining about someone car camping or living in their vehicle, they're making a complaint because that person is unhoused.
The, well, and so I think the way, if you, if you look at the terminology that for the biased crime, that is not connected to a complaint being asserted under, um, like a, a chapter five type complaint. That relates to something that is a crime that then is being, that is occurring because that person has a, a protected status that's listed within that biased crime. So for example, an assault or a, um, or the, or a property crime or something like that. And so it's something that's a crime and it's being perpetrated against somebody in a manner because of their, um, their housing status, their racial status, whatever. Versus a complaint-driven process is a complaint-driven process. And so that is, that is still facially neutral. So they're very, very, those chapter four amendments you made, um, are very separate from, from what we're talking about.
Yeah, I thank you. There's apples and oranges. My time's up, Mayor. I may come back for a second round.
Okay, thank you. I, um, everybody's had a first round. I have five of you wanting a, now six wanting a second round. It is six twenty-two. So I'm gonna assume from all of this energy that you want to proceed with this and not do the airport, uh, uh, aviation discussion tonight. Um, in order to be able to, because the other option is to do a kind of a lightning round, save half an hour for the airport conversation. So, um, just, just a reminder. So, uh, you know, I'll, I'll see where we are at six thirty, but I'm gonna assume that we're just gonna overrun the time because this is important. Yes, manager. Yeah, Mayor, I was just gonna say I had an opportunity to talk to Counselor Evans earlier today and also with Margaret Hamilton. And so the, the timing, urgency of the, the funding airport conversation happening today is not what it was when this originally came forward. So if it needs to move back a little bit, I'm gonna look at Counselor Evans. I think it'll be okay. And my preference would be to just say, hey, Catherine, you can, you can go for the night because I can, I, I think this is gonna go longer. Okay, all right. As I saw, Counselor Evans nod with that, so, all right, so we will carry on. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks. So I have Mike and then Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned initially, my two concerns are whack-a-mole and enforcement. Claire's pointed that the hours of enforcement, I think, are critical. Um, so my question, my first question on that note, I suppose is for Catherine. Um, City Attorney, if we create new ordinance that um, is to address this specific problem and then folks have an expectation that will mean that we're going to fix this problem and enforce on that, and then we don't enforce effectively. In other words, if we don't have overnight enforcement, are we open, uh, criminally or civilly, um, liable because we're not enforcing?
No, we have, we always have discretionary enforcement authority. We have, um, we have enforcement that's based on our resource capacity. So it certainly has, um, it certainly does create political problems when there's expectations, um, that something's going to occur. But are they legal, civil or criminal? Uh, no.
There's no civil, uh, there's no opportunity for civil challenge that we're causing loss by our inability to enforce?
I'm not saying somebody couldn't bring a lawsuit alleging that, but based on this very moment in time of me trying to think of what the cause of action would be, um, and our discretionary enforcement authority and our resource, um, in, that's drives our enforcement, I don't know what that cause of action would be off the top of my head. I certainly have never seen a case like that in my twenty-plus years of, of doing this.
I, I'm much more concerned with us doing something effective. And so I suppose my comment is for Jeff at this point, if Jeff is still with us here somewhere. Um, that, uh, yes, there he is. Um, if there's a capacity administratively to adjust our enforcement staffing to meet the actual need on the ground, I, I would encourage us to consider doing that. Secondly, with regards to the s- the second wave of signs, let's say we whack-a-mole here and we have a second wave of sign need. I'm hearing that, Jeff, that's based entirely on your judgment about whether we need a sign in a place or not?
Technically, it's the traffic engineer that does that. However, however, uh, we do, you know, we have staff in the field all the time. They are contacting the businesses, they're observing what's happening on the streets and they are making recommendations to us. And so it is a partnership, but it is an administrative action.
Can you talk about the criteria on which you'll say, okay, this street needs a sign?
Uh, yeah, it, you know, part of it's the, uh, uh, kind of a matrix of thinking around this. Uh, you know, seeing whether there's vehicles that are exceeding, you know, there, there's no turnover is the biggest piece. Uh, we also look at, uh, areas where, uh, the employees and commercial needs are, if we're talking about the, we're talking about the industrial and commercial areas. The businesses request it, that's one of the biggest, uh, that's how most of our signs go in around campus and downtown is the businesses request it. So the businesses will be the biggest driver of that, of that need. And then there is for our criteria in chapter five, we go through administrative action for that.
If a business requests, is there a criteria under which you'll say no?
There are. We need to, uh, address a criteria in chapter five. And I would hope if they are asking us, we are, uh, be able to respond to it within that criteria.
Okay, is there a negative effect of me offering an amendment to make it four blocks instead of two?
Um, questions for me?
Yes.
The, uh, uh, it creates, you know, it, in the area, it creates more movement, right? It's, uh, the definition of four blocks versus two blocks. The impact, uh, you know, uh, I think we're talking about storage on the street. Is that the, I should ask that question, storage on the street and the time limits?
Because there's some places out there on commercial where it looks like somebody can move three blocks and the clock starts again, and I want to eliminate that. So I'm thinking four blocks looks like the longest distance there, and thus we cover that problem.
We look at making sure, uh, the vehicle drivers, we write citations to vehicles, uh, that they have the ability to understand what four blocks is. So that's different than feet, right? Uh, it's a little bit easier there. So it just, it, it has, you, you have to move till, you have to move out in a large, you have to move more blocks. That's the impact.
But is there a negative reason for me not to do it?
It would also, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, if, if I may, I, I think, um, typically the two tools we're talking about, so code that's more broad and parking restrictions that are targeted, typically we're able to use the parking restrictions that are more targeted for a problem like you're talking about. Um, if, if there's an issue in a, a specific street, especially in commercial and industrial, which is what the direction that you, you've given us to come back with a plan to address is, we would be focusing on that issue in that area. So if we, if we come in, we put the signs in, it's not being effective. One of the other things that we'll be doing when we come back is talk to you about how it's working and potential changes we would make. So that.
I'm gonna make the amendment. I'd rather err on the side of making sure that we solve it the first time rather than coming back to solve it a second time. And if it needs to be adjusted down, then so be it. My last question is for Catherine. Do we have any legal issues if, as I've seen on West Eleventh and some of the, the uh, illegal camping taking place there, people are actually building physical structures with plywood and, on, in, in camps. Once someone builds a domicile of some nature that has a permanent nature to it, I don't know the code will have to define that. Do we run into any kind of legal issues removing them or asking them to move outside of, with these new code amendments?
Is it in our right of way?
I've seen stuff on road sides. I don't know if I can define, or I think it's easement.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we do, we have certain code provisions that cover placement of things in the right of way. Um, and so th- that would, it, it would cover a, a large canopy of things, including some sort of, um, structure. If you're asking.
If they build a house or a mini house on the side of the road.
The only thing that jumps to mind is that, that may need to, is if somebody is somehow barricaded in it and we need to, um, they're not coming out and that's part of what is happening. Um, perhaps there would need to be a warrant, um, to, to, to remove them. That's the only thing that comes to mind, um, if it, if they've created something that they can actually lock themselves into.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Had to unmute myself there. Uh, there was a lot of things I was going to say, but I, I think in the interest of time, I'm gonna try and narrow it down a little bit. Um, uh, to what Counselor Siret said about the after hours and maybe different shifts, uh, to look at with parking control, I think that that's certainly, uh, worthy of looking at. Um, I do know that on Owen Loop, there was a business there that couldn't get one of their delivery trucks in at, oh, it was the middle of the night. They get a lot of their large shipments in the middle of the night. And they were able to get a police officer to come out and help them with the problem in that instance. But I also know there's many more instances where they couldn't get anybody to come out and just had to turn away the shipment because it couldn't make that ninety-degree cut. Uh, to what, uh, Counselor, my esteemed colleague, Counselor Keating, said. Uh, I likewise, I, I think we agree on most issues and I certainly would expect, uh, all of us to have dis- disagreements at times. But as far as equal enforcement, there was one worker out on West Seventh who had been calling in, I forgot how many times she said, on a particular RV that was causing problems out there. And nothing was done, uh, despite the seventy-two hour rule. And then she went home one night and they'd had to move their trailer, camp trailer, out of their parking area on their property to the street because they had some construction work done. And she came home to find a parking citation. Also Essex Construction on West 7th just received a parking citation this past week. And at the same time, they're pointing at vehicles across the street that have been there for weeks and months. And so it's, you know, it, it's one of those things where I, I think there's going to be perceptions of inequity, no matter what we do. I, I also want to talk just briefly about the, the whack a mole comment. And I understand that. And, you know, I don't really particularly want to move problems around either, but it's very easy to say that when you haven't been hearing these people's stories and how it is impacting them personally, professionally, impacting their incomes, what they're dealing with. It, it almost feels like there's a group of people in a lifeboat, looking at the person in the water that's drowning and saying, ah, just hang on, we'll be rescued pretty soon. These folks need a break. They need help and we need them on our side as we try to address the long-term problem that we're, we're dealing with here, to come up with long-term solutions. And we need, we have to have credibility with them and right now we don't. And they need to see a sign of good faith that we are listening to them and that we are trying to make a difference in our community for everybody. You know, and, and these are not heartless people. I've listened to them talk. Some of them have pulled themselves out of difficult situations over the years. And, and they want to help those who want to be helped and can be helped. The problem they're dealing with is mostly criminal in nature. That's what's affecting them. They're getting, in fact, I was really glad to see the state, okay, well, I'll stop, but it's, they need help.
Okay, thank you. Alan, then Greg.
Yeah, over the last couple of months, I've really changed my mind about the homelessness issue and the way we've been tackling it and that we do need bigger sites, more sites. And we're going to talk about that a little bit later and that we need to address the issue. There's some people that say we're just coddling homeless people and getting more and more people here. Let's sort of agree with that. Most of them are homegrown folks that have been one paycheck away. And, and now they're there in, living in their cars as RVs. We do have a big problem. It's all over the city. It's not just West, West Eugene industrial areas. It's, it's, we saw the camping map, it's everywhere in the city. And it's in every city on the West Coast. It's not just Eugene, if people think that is the issue as well. So I think this is, as Claire said, this is a very challenging issue. It's definitely whack a mole and we're doing this fast and relatively cheap, but we're probably not getting it right. We will revisit this again with, because we're going to have new areas that we're going to be focused with or faced with. And, and enforcement issues, they're going to come there. We're, we're, every time we do one of these, we, it is whack a mole. We create new problems and unintended consequences. So we're just going to revisit this issue over and over again. And Jennifer, yeah, we're talking about parking yet again. Question I had, which didn't get answered before, was around the ordinance. So are we going to bring the ordinance back to us before or after the report back on what happened with the implementation of the pilot?
That I don't know from a scheduling standpoint. So if the, if you pass both the motions, you have, you have a report back in three months. I would have assumed that, but this was just my assumption, that the public hearing was going to probably be scheduled before the, before you go on break. So which would likely be before those three months. But I don't want to, I don't do the, the agenda. So that was just my assumption, that you would have the public hearing prior to the report.
So three months would be end of July, right at the end, before we go on break. My suggestion is that we take those two things up simultaneously, that we have that report back on what's happened. And we bring up the issue of the ordinance when it comes back to us at the same time. I think that makes a lot of sense. And maybe it doesn't, maybe it doesn't, we don't need three months. Maybe we need one month.
Okay. Greg and then Claire.
Okay. A couple of things. One, what have, have the conversations been with abutting businesses around these, these sites? You know, I, I talked with a couple of people over there on West 7th a week or so ago. And they're really anxious to be a contributing part of solving this problem. Do, is, is there a way, I know that, that we had talked about this before a while back, maybe a year ago, that private individuals or businesses that have spare space, for lack of a better term, how can we work with them in order to deal with this issue? Because I mean, we all know what it is. It's, it's been there since I've been on council. You know, Stevie wondered to see this from space. You know, this is, this is what we've got to deal with. So how do we incorporate the private sector in our solutions?
Counselor Evans, I can speak to that. So as, as part of our unified command structure, we have Ed Russo, who's, works in our planning department, used to work for the registered guard. He's our business outreach liaison and he's been going out and going door to door and talking with businesses, many of them in the areas you're talking about. He's also part of our property search team. So he's connecting those dots. When he has conversations with folks about, to try and understand impacts, he's also talking to them about whether or not there's a place they see that they might be able to help with, with property or other ways.
Any luck yet? Got any takers?
Not quite yet, but we're, we're working relationships. And as I also said, we're also working closely with the Chamber of Commerce. They've, they've come in as a partner to help us look for locations as well and work with.
And I, and I realize this is a first step. But, you know, the set, the sense of urgency out there is, is really immediate. And that's not just the industrial areas. You know, I, I hear from people, you know, that are neighbors of neighborhood parks that are having major issues with people, you know, sleeping on their porches and open the door, wake up and, you know, some guy is there, you know? And I know that Monroe Park has been one of those. There's been a few others as well. So, you know, aside from using those neighborhood parks, what other places do we really have available to us? And are we asking the county if they have land that we can use as well? To sell it, since, since human services is a county function?
So we, yeah, our, our land search team is a, a, a strike team of city and county employees that are working on that. And they're looking at their properties as well. We're looking, we are working with commercial real estate brokers to understand what's for lease, what's for sale, as well as using those relationships through the chamber and business contacts to see if there might be something that's not on the market that may be a viable site.
Okay, Claire and then Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate Counselor Groves pointing out that a lot of our industrial businesses have a 24/7 work, you know, they're coming in at night to drop off trucks and having armed law enforcement go out to deal with parking is probably one of the things we want to reconsider around our equity work and reforming how we use our police. It's probably also a lot cheaper to have a parking services person do that work, even paying them a night shift differential. So I'll just put that out there. But, but I will also have to say, like Counselor Keating, I, this proposal does give me some heartburn. I, I, I don't believe it's unconstitutional, but I just am so concerned that we don't have those alternatives prepared yet. And it's going to be a while before we get to them. And I really am a little challenged with some of the language we were using i- in this conversation. So I want to remind everyone that we are talking about people living on the streets. They're not moles to be whacked. And they are not their vehicles. And I agree that the businesses need help and I'm willing to support the proposal because of it. But so do the people who are living on the streets that are going to be displaced by this policy. And I know that there are people out there doing criminal activities and, you know, behaviors that should be cited and possibly arrested for. And that's a capacity issue as well. So I'm not condoning those activities, but I, I just really want to ground us back in who we are talking about when we talk about RVs. We are talking about human beings. So we definitely need to find relief for those in commercial industrial businesses so they can do their business and not be in fear and not be blocked. But we also need to be working, you know, to find those alternative places for people to go. So I know staff is working hard and working in collaboration with the county and the Chamber of Commerce to find sites. And I hope we'll be successful in getting those sites open soon.
Okay, thank you. Matt and then Emily.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Cyret, for your poignant comments. A constituent just reached out to me and, and underscored the importance of equality of enforcement and, and equity in regards to, to tracking, should, should this ordinance change? The suggestion is that, like when there's a criminal trespass citation, an unhoused individual is marked as a transient, that probably should be marked if there's a parking citation and there's someone clearly living in, in their vehicle to properly ensure that the, the code isn't discriminatory in nature, that there isn't really, I think that would be one roadblock to, or one, one avenue to explore, to, to prevent the, the complaints aren't disproportionately made against the unhoused. I have a question about land acquisition. Obviously, that's, that's a conversation for later tonight after, after public hearing. But it's been impressed upon us that 337 vehicles at this point were on the streets last year. And that number has spiked to 879 at, at present and growing. And I suspect even more with the moratorium, the eviction moratorium sun setting shortly. How does the timeline, I heard two months, how does the timeline of the enforcement of what we're discussing right now, should it pass, coincide with the timeline of receiving federal or state funds to explore land acquisition? Is it still yet another, for lack of a better term, is it cart before horse? Or will we be able, as a community, to say, you can't be here, here's the reasonable place you can be? Do those timelines, are they, do they dovetail nicely? Is there a delay? Is, is one a two month and one a six month? Realistically, what do those timelines look like? How do they match up? Should council support both proposals? It's probably a question, I'd hate to put you on the spot, manager, but unless.
No, it's okay. I'm, I actually was just looking to make sure nobody else was unmuting because I think you're asking a really good question that, that is not easy to sort of gantt chart out without a specific, you know, without a specific time directed motion. So here's how I think it plays out. So I wanted to clarify our proposal going forward, based on some of what I heard Counselors Linka suggesting, which is the first part, you know, there's, part of this is administrative in nature and part of this is code change. And the administrative in nature piece, I'm looking for you to say you support that. And that's the work of going in and doing some of the parking, no parking, the signage. And if you support that and you sort of support this overall plan, then we will also be bringing you back the code pieces. And my intention on that was that we would schedule that public hearing rapidly, that, that both of these things will be moving together forward, which I think is different than what Counselors Linka was saying. The timeline on the land is, there's a couple of different paths. One, we are actively looking for land, we're actively working with our partners. If something comes up and it says, you know, you, we can't do it unless we buy a piece of land, then we'll be, you know, there's some due diligence and time that goes with purchasing that land. If we find land leased, which we're also looking at, it can be much faster and the setup can be much faster. So, you know, I, I do think there is a, yes, we'll be moving forward probably before there's exact locations for people to be. But I think we are all pretty mindful of what the overall direction has been, which is both of these things need to kind of happen together as best possible.
Thank you, manager.
Add just a little bit more to what the city manager had to say. In addition to the land piece, it just kind of also be mindful that we're also working with providers. And so in order to have these locations be successful, bringing our provider partners along to have the right services at the sites is really important. We're working on getting outreach teams established so that in areas where we have a lot of people congregating, that we're able to get out there, assess the needs of the people that are in those camps so that we can start thinking about how to put people together in a way that is, is more successful than just having a bunch of people move. And so we're really working on now just what a transition plan would be so that we're really ready to go. So I don't know if that helps or not, but.
It does, thank you. And Mayor, if I can make one final point in my final 30 seconds, I, I was at a United Way conversation about where folks are on the spectrum of need a couple of years ago, and it's, it's, it's made an amazing impression on me. And I know it's apples to oranges or it's different buckets of money. But when I hear $115,000 for a street signage to tell folks they can't park somewhere, I start thinking about how many Conestoga huts at a $2,000 pot could we purchase for $115,000? It's 57 Conestoga huts. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily.
Thank you. My printer is broken and I can't get the two screens up at once, so I don't have the motions. And I'm a little bit confused. The administration part that we can start right away is the parking. And then the ordinance change that we make after a public hearing is the not parking in front of places and the two blocks? Can you help me out with the difference? Is that right?
The administrative, the administrative plan that Jeff and Chris Henry described was in response to the motion that Counselor Groves put out and that was passed two weeks ago, which is because, you know, Eugene code, 5.040 of the code gives all of that, gives the city manager and the city managers doesn't need the administrative authority to designate areas within the city as no parking areas and to say what the time limits are. So that was already, that policy decision was already made by the council as part of the code to say those are administrative actions. So that kind of sign and the map and all of that, that was falling under that existing authority. The proposed code amendments was something that it was actually already being discussed by your parking department and others before Counselor Groves's motion was passed. And so that's why that piece was coming forward as well. And so they kind of worked together. So the code amendments were the ones that you saw that are, was attachment B, that includes some of the tweaks to the storage on street and those that are citywide. And those would be code changes that would need to happen. There'd be, you'd need to put it forward to a public hearing and then take action or not take action.
So that part wouldn't be starting as soon as the signage and the.
Correct, very much right. It would need a public hearing and the charter process.
Extremely helpful. Once again, we're in the position of making a choice to make people move with nowhere to go. And it's so, so difficult to do that. And I, I know we're working really hard, but I, I just have to, to say that this, it's, it's hard to say, okay, there's nowhere for people to go. And again, it sounds like you're working on with the providers and such. But, but once we find a place, how long, you know, do you already have the plans for whatever's needed? Are you working on that at the same time?
We are. And when we come back later in May, we will have some prototypes to show you that we'll also talk about service provisions at the sites, how they'll be set up. And so that's part of the work session that's coming up. But all of that, all of these things are kind of moving along together.
That's wonderful. I, I really appreciate that. And Counselor Clark's idea about the four blocks, I don't think that's okay because. I don't think that's okay because this is citywide. And if you park on the street in front of your house and now you have to move four blocks away, that's really could be problematic. So I think we have to consider the effects, uh, citywide. And I wish everybody would just pick up their garbage and start again. Thank you.
All right, Alan, I see your hand is up for a third round and then we'll wrap it up and put a motion on the table.
Yeah, just, um, one comment and, um, one question. The, the, I think it's going to be a long time before we can say we have a place for everybody to go, all of the, all of the homeless people to go. Um, so we'll, oh, I think for the real near term, we're going to be in this position that we're, we find ourselves in. Um, to the city manager's comment, when we take up the ordinance, um, I and expect other people, other councils will ask, how's the administrative part of this going? And how much has this just moved people around? So when we come to that, um, I don't, we don't need a full-blown, you know, document that talks about that in terms of how the, the, that's part of the motion for, to answer those questions. But those are going to be the things that I'm going to be concerned about when, when this ordinance comes up for action by the council after a public hearing, which I assume will be scheduled for the next available public hearing, which would be in May.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, I'm just going to chime in with one, a couple of quick comments, which is that I do feel this, the struggle in the, in the council. And I do think this is, uh, a choice between two terrible things and, um, people who are unsheltered. And then the disruption that that causes in, in neighborhoods and in business districts. And I know that the parking teams have been frustrated by their inability to really manage effectively and, uh, you know, have struggled with that. I've been in meetings where, you know, the, it's, it's, it's not any fun for staff either be, to be working on this issue and not feel that there's a good solution. And I, I guess what I want to leave you with is this, um, little ray of hope, which is that as a council and as a city government, you have worked on a whole package of solutions and that staff is moving forward on that whole package of solutions. And that, and that will involve this, the discussion later tonight that we're talking about. It's, it's related to all the work we've been doing with the county. It's related, I think, ultimately to how we just have more, more, greater capacity on the street to, to communicate with people who are out there, who are, who are struggling in these settings. And a reminder that we have in our urban camping policy established some kind of basic guidelines for how we hope, will expect people to behave when they're living in public spaces. And those guidelines can actually help with some of the outreach on that street parking also to reduce that impact. So I appreciate how awful this situation is. What we really want is to provide housing and services for everyone who wants and needs housing and services. And we're, we don't have that capacity yet and we're forced to do it incrementally. And you as a council are forced to come back iteratively every couple of months and revisit. And that is the way it will be because we're not going to come up with a single solution. We're not going to have one that fits forever. We're going to learn as we go. We do one step, we learn from that, we modify a couple of months later. And that is the work before us. So thank you for this conversation. And with that, I am going to turn to Jennifer and ask her to put a motion on the table.
Sure. Move to support the plan and strategies presented during today's work session and to direct the city manager to report back to council in three months on plan implementation progress.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed, one. Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. And then Jennifer, the second motion?
Move to direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, ordinance attached to the AIS as attachment B.
Second. All in favor, please. Oh, you want to speak to it? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend for all places that say two, two blocks to substitute for four blocks. Randy's trying to second.
Second, sorry.
Okay, second, yes, Matt, you want?
Uh, yeah, point of, uh, of information. And I mistakenly, and I own this, uh, thought we were voting on B first, so I misunderstood the motion. I'd like to change my vote to an affirmative for, for, uh, staff's recommendations.
Okay.
But it's pretty clear how I'll be voting on this motion.
Okay, thank you. So that first motion passes eight zero with that changed vote. And now we're on this motion and it has been seconded to, uh, be amended to, to e- e- expand the distance to four blocks. So any other questions or discussion about that? All in favor of that? Oh, sorry, sorry, Greg, go for it.
Yeah, uh, back to staff, uh, does the, is there a significant difference in uh, four blocks versus two blocks? Does that make a significant difference or does it add to the problem?
Hey, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, um, you know, it depends on, uh, which areas, which problems, which challenges. Um, it, it does extend out two more blocks. I think, I think it would be-
Like over, over at West Seventh and Burnson.
This would apply to the, um, the entire city of Eugene as we enforce the time limits and the storage on the street code.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, this was why I asked Jeff and others specifically if there were negative effects and I didn't hear any.
Counselor Clark, I'll just, I, I know you don't like people to argue with you, so this is not an argument. I just think our team analyzed what do they think would be the best tool available to kind of move things along and they came up with two. So we just haven't had time to kind of think through, what does that look like if it's four blocks? So I think that's why you're getting the little bit of hesitancy is we don't, we don't usually like to provide information we're not certain of.
Totally get it. But the distances in some of the problem areas are longer than two blocks. And I'd hate to see us create something like this, saying it's a solution, only to have a loophole exploited and someone move two blocks down the street, but stay within the same commercial area, especially on Seventh Commercial. And then have us come back months later because we didn't actually fix the problem. I'd much rather move it to four so that in those areas, we actually fix the problem. And if there does become a negative effect of some nature, then we correct it at that time, when the problem isn't so acute.
So, okay, can, can I just ask for a point of clarification here? This would go to a public hearing.
Right.
You will have an opportunity to reconsider this based on what you hear at a public hearing.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going forward passage until the public hears, but I want them to hear us putting forward an effective solution.
Okay, uh, so as amended, all in favor, please raise your-
Well, no, you need to vote.
Not yet, sorry. Alan is still there, sorry.
And you need to vote on the amendment separately.
Yeah, I was going to ask if, um, city attorney, if as a substitute, change to the, to the, uh, ordinance, if it were changed from two to four blocks after the public hearing?
Um, no, I mean, that's, that's what you're getting testimony on, changing it either way. Um, if you were to go from two to four or four to two, that would be something that you could have, that you could change without a second public hearing if those are two questions.
Yeah, I guess my preference would be let's, let's go with what we have right now and, and people can comment on that. And we could decide it in public hearing. We're not going to, it's not going to make any difference at all whether or not we do that today or not because the ordinance is going to take effect until month or two down the road anyway. So I, I, I'm, that's my preference for how we go more forward.
Okay, so Catherine, I'm lost. So we have to vote first on the motion. The first motion on the table was to have it move forward for a public hearing.
No, th- but then, um, there was an amendment put on.
There was an amendment.
So you're going to vote on, um, Counselor Clark's amendment to change two blocks to four blocks
Okay.
in the proposed ordinance?
And then we would vote to move to a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Either as amendment or as originally.
Right, depending on how this vote comes out. Gotcha. Okay, so all in favor of the proposed change in distance from two to four blocks, please raise your hands. One, two, three, opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, that goes down. So now we're back to the motion to, to move forward to schedule a public hearing on the original distance. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed, one. Okay, so that passes seven to one. Thank you all very much. Thank you, um, Jeff and Matt and Chris for clarifying. And Christie and Sarah, thank you staff and Catherine for keeping us on track. And, uh, we are now adjourned until seven thirty. Thank you all.
Thanks.